Now, we got, and the first thing is the proclamation, I believe.
So we begin with the sad but occasion of saying goodbye to Molly. I should say that I have a quite a sore throat and I considered passing the reading of the proclamation to someone else, but given how often you have soldiered through adversity, I felt the least I could do was give it a shot and be ready to pitch in if I fail. So, "A proclamation recognizing the dedication and volunteer service of Molly Davis to open space and mountain parks 2013 to 2018. Whereas Molly Davis has been a member of the Open Space Board of Trustees for the past five years, vice chair in 2016 to 2017, and chair of the board in 2017 to 2018. And whereas Molly Davis has shown a passion and commitment for open space and mountain parks stating that the OSBT has been the most important job in her life, Molly has devoted countless hours to meeting with community members, staff, and elected and appointed officials to listen to facts, opinions, and perspectives at times into late night and early morning hours. Molly can be counted on to thoroughly read and research all materials on all subjects that have any possible relationship to open space and mountain parks. Molly has been known to attend board meetings while facing illness and injury, not allowing anything to interfere with her service to the community. Her numerous contributions include the following. During Molly's tenure, the Open Space Program has acquired nearly 2,000 acres of land, including the following: Joda Ranch, Boulder Valley Farm, Martinson, Trigdallier, Coleman Oliver Suits, and a trail easement area over the North Foothills Business Park. In efforts to process and represent the experience of the 2013 rain event and flooding in and around Boulder, Molly painted over 100 different scenes across the OSMP system, hoping to tell the story of resilience and recovery. Raptor fledgling totals during Molly's five-year term include 10 bald eagles, eight golden eagles, 22 osprey, 16 peregrine falcons, 18 prairie falcons, and 59 burrowing owls. During her tenure, OSBT and OSMP increased investment in system stewardship, enhanced the Voice and Sight Tag Program, her very first meeting, largely completed all trail repairs related to the 2013 flood, crafted the North TSA Plan, an agricultural resources management plan, and recommended changes and guiding principles in Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan update. Molly chaired the 50th anniversary celebration of the Open Space Sales Tax, supported the department's environmental education programming, and represented the OSBT on the Greenways Advisory Committee. Molly has many special gifts and expertise to offer, but the most special may be her passion for the way art represents our experience and relationship with nature. Molly has literally come face to face with the power of Mother Nature through our open space system, including an encounter with a mountain lion. She patiently waited with heart beating while gathering her art supplies."[224.34][224.34](laughter) To fight back with.[227.23][227.23](laughter) Now, therefore, I, Tom Isaacson, member of the Open Space Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim that the leadership exhibited by Molly Davis over these past five years has been instrumental to the success of this board and the Open Space Program. Proclaim this 14th day of March in the year 2018 on behalf of the Open Space Board of Trustees and the Open Space and Mountain Parks Department.[252.01][252.01](applause) Let me just quickly add on a personal note, that it has been a great, extraordinary journey with you. I know for those who are actively involved in open space matters, five years ago, you know, candidly, some people were saying, "Who's Molly Davis?" And we quickly found out, someone with the tenacity of a triathlete and the sensibility and aesthetics of an artist, and we've been very fortunate to have you bring both of those qualities to this board. You know, you've often shown an extraordinary willingness to dig into stuff, even some fairly dry things like cost allocation in the budget, and always brought, I think, a truly heartfelt and unique perspective that was very much your own. And I think the board and the Open Space Program have been very lucky to have you here, and we certainly wish you well.
Oh, my gosh.[316.58][316.58](applause)
I would add on to Tom's beautifully written and presented.
Right.
I just wanted to remind one incident where you showed exceptional physical tenacity. Is this on?
It's a little green button.
It says it's on.
Let me try and turn it.
I guess not. How about this one? Not long ago, you walked out the length of the Eagle Trail with an injured ankle so that you could personally inspect a trail section. And so, you're going to be presented with the gold medal for either bravery or foolish bravery. It's pretty much the same, so.[376.03][376.03](laughter)[377.03][377.03](applause)
I guess it's my turn, but I want to thank everybody who has worked so hard with open space. I'm just so impressed by staff and so amazed at the amount of work, and my board members who always read everything and we always work on things, and even though we differ at times, I have tremendous respect for what you all have done and we've done together. And looking at us rebuilding our system since the flood, it's really amazing to me what was done by each and every one of you. I'm just humbled by that. But thank you for the service, it's been fantastic.[433.31][433.31](applause) All right, so on to approval of the minutes. Do we have any changes to the minutes? Okay, do we have a second or a motion of approval?
Just the name, changes to people's names.
Oh, to the items, okay. So there are some changes to the...
To some of the folks that spoke last month.
Okay, and do we want to say as amended? Okay, so with the following changes of people who spoke, because now I had given you the pink slip, so a few of these names changed because of that. So with the changes to the names of the people in the minutes who spoke, I put a motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting of February 14th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, and then next, are we going into the system? Open Space Master Plan system, okay, we're doing it. Yep, we do, sorry. It's my last meeting.[536.16][536.16](laughter) How fuzzy here! I'm gonna screw it up once, or maybe this is many more than once. All right, so we have three people who are gonna speak for public participation for items that are not agenda, and we do have two agenda items at the end, so if you're coming to speak about any of the purchase approvals, that will come later. So Kathy Joyner.
Good evening, I guess this is the last time I'm gonna be able to speak in front of Molly. Thank you so much for your service. I know it's a lot of work and we appreciate volunteers. My name is Kathy Joyner again. I live at 4960 Quala Drive, and I'm speaking on behalf of the South Boulder Creek Action Group. I want to thank the board for its past support in moving the South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation Project along over these past several years. I know you must understand how grateful so many of us are that live downstream from this point where South Boulder Creek overtopped from 36 so catastrophically in 2013. We were happy to hear that staff, with your approval, has now directed the city consultants for the field mitigation project to work on variations of the preferred alternative in ways that could potentially enhance open space during this concept evaluation phase. We encourage that, we're happy to hear that, and we're very hopeful that such positives for open space will become a viable part of the flood mitigation solution. The thousands of us that live in harm's way very much appreciate your efforts to help get this critical flood mitigation project completed as soon as possible. As you know, our lives and safety depend on it. And again, thank you for your past and continuing support.
Thank you. Jackie, who may be?
I'm speaking about the summary overview report, and the intent, I believe, is, and I went to the meeting on Monday, which was great, is to ground the process of the Open Space and Mountain Park Master Plan and where we go from here over the next 18 months while it's finalized. Couple of points to that end, as a Colorado Native Plant Society member and engaged citizen, I feel that there needs to be more specific information presented on natural resources throughout the report. Without more specific resource information on the plants and plant communities, existing data and trends, how are we supposed to provide thoughtful questions to be asked to the open space and mountain park staff? The vegetative monitoring program that began in 1990 can provide this baseline trajectory of change, quote unquote, in which other management options can be assessed. Where are the summaries of this data? Secondly, is there enough money to manage and maintain the system? Chapter 8 indicates 61% of the open space and mountain park trails need preventive maintenance or major repairs, with no specifics provided on the maintenance cycles mentioned over three times in that report, that chapter. Several partnerships are mentioned as a means to provide funds to the department, and my question is what policies are in place to ensure that the open space and mountain park remains in control of the message presented by these partnerships? And then on a personal note, I just wanted to mention that the Colorado Native Plant Society has volunteered for years helping with the herbarium and rare plant surveys, and we were not mentioned in the summary overview report. Also, finally, visitors' quality of experience seemed to be the overriding theme of the SOR. My question is, does that override the community well-being mentioned also in the same line with the SOR? Does it override the health of the natural lands and organisms that rely on these lands? Often visitor experience has negative impacts to the open space and mountain park resources. Why are these controversial issues not discussed in the SOR? They are present, and with a new regional trail that is being developed, will become more urgent. I hope that the master plan will address these issues with the guidance by the excellent Open Space and Mountain Park staff.
Thank you, Jackie. Ray Bridge?
Good evening, I'm Raymond Bridge, 435 South 38th Street in Boulder, speaking on behalf of the 1,600 members of the Boulder County Ottoman Society. We would also like very much to thank Molly for her service, just as another example of her diligence when there was a proposal to dispose of a bunch of the paved trails that are on open space. Molly went out before the meeting, walked every single one, checked the boundaries, and that's pretty typical of the service she's given us the last five years. Back to my topic. We urge the Board of Trustees to be active in the development of the OSMP Master Plan. In particular, we urge you to ensure that the department fulfills its core role of preservation of the wildlife, native plants, and ecosystems that are the heart of what all Boulder citizens treasure about our open space. There are many aspects of the system overview document that are excellent, but it is disappointingly vague about wildlife, plant communities, and native ecosystems, as well as about the actions and funding needed to preserve them for the next 50 years. We hope that the board will ensure that OSMP fulfills this vital purpose, which is critical to all the charter purposes. In the face of climate change, population pressure, and increasing recreational demand, we must preserve the animals, plants, and ecosystems that are the foundation of our open space and mountain parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to matters from the department next.
I actually have a quick update before we get to the items listed. As many people noticed today, there was a fire that started on the open space and mountain park system this afternoon, so I wanted to give a little update to everyone. At about 3:00 PM today, a fire began near the Gregory Canyon Trailhead. OSMP Rangers and fire crews responded immediately. At 5:00 PM, the fire was at three acres and was 30% contained. I just received a text just as this meeting was about to start that the fire is under control, and that the crews are working the night shift to cool the perimeter of the fire. So that's all very good news. Trails in the area were closed, and they continue to be closed until further notice. This is to support the firefighters and their efforts. Boulder Fire Rescue will be continuing to provide updates as time goes on. Currently, there have been no reports of any serious injuries of visitors or people working on the fire. And the first responders, of course, are focused on safety first, and I really thank the crews, the staff, and everybody who is involved in fighting the fire, putting the closures in place and so on, protecting the public and our precious lands. The next update, Mark, are you gonna kick off? Mark Davison?
Good evening, Mark Davison, Community Connections and Partnerships Manager. Just before I dive into the system overview tonight, I want to do a very brief update on a conservation volunteer project coming up. It will be, it's just coming up on the screen, it's gonna be at Chautauqua in Ranger Cottage, and it's gonna do some native plants, teaching people about restoration, then doing the actual planting itself. It will be on March 28th from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and if any of the board would like to attend, I'll participate. Just give me an email or a shout, and I'll be able to direct you to the website. Great little project. Okay, get to the main part of tonight's presentation. Thank you. So we're here tonight to give you an overview of the system overview report. It is really just, I'll give an introduction, and then Darren Wagner will lead kind of more detailed information. We released the report on February 21st. It is an easy-to-read document, that was one of our goals, but it's also a comprehensive document, and it does cover a broad range of topics with the purpose of serving that city charter purpose for open space. Initial feedback has been positive. Actually, I'd like to acknowledge Kurt Brown, board member, for the really nice feedback we got. It was very constructive, and its staff really felt that support, and that is appreciated. We do know there's room for improvement, of course, and it is, that's why we have this window of engagement, and we do really appreciate any public comment that comes in. Will be dealt with in two sort of ways, we'll correct some of the factual areas through an addendum immediately, and then any bigger issues that we need, this is a first for the department, we plan to do periodic updates, will include those sort of bigger issues that we need to correct in further updates as we go down the road. Before I pass you over to Darren, though, I would like to acknowledge the effort and the people and the contributions to this document. It does serve as a foundation for the master plan, and especially Darren Wagner, sitting here tonight, she's the project manager, she did an amazing job coordinating all the contributors. I'd like to mention Brian Attaker, hiding at the back.[1199.41][1199.41](laughter) Brian's our science officer, and honestly, without him, the scientific knowledge along with working with science staff to get that sort of hardcore information into the plan was great. We know it is an overview of the system, there is documents behind that plan that can support it and are available to anyone who needs them. I'd also like to mention Amanda Jeter, who is our consultant from Design Workshop. It's been a great team effort, and we are actually integrated, we're not just asking the consultant to go off and bring something back, we're really working as a great team, and I think you see that in the content of the report. Finally, I'd like to mention the sort of larger staff team, you can see the list up on the screen here. Incredible amount of contributions, dedicated staff time, really thoughtful process, and we asked ourselves a lot of questions to get this report to where it's at now, and it really led to not only good morale, but also a good feeling that we did something worthwhile for the department. I think in the room tonight, we've got a few people, you see Dionne, Katie, Erica, Mark Jean, Luke, various people who are on this list who contributed.
Kristin.
Kristin, thank you, sorry, didn't miss anybody. Finally, I'd like to thank the board and council, especially the Process Committee and the board and council feeding into that Process Committee, because that's guided us through this process and set this up for success. Before I leave here, I would like to mention, I can't be amiss to mention the turnout on Monday for the open house, we had about 100 people attend, fantastic dialogue, and we've got some great information we'll bring back to you obviously at a later date. But for now, I'll bring you back to the main subject matter, which is through Darren, I'll pass it over to her to give you an overview.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, board, nice to see you tonight. So I will have, yes, okay, perfect, maybe, yes. So I wanted, as Mark mentioned, to just ground us in terms of where we're at, and I'll do this briefly, because I do want to focus our attention on the report itself and get your feedback on that tonight. But as you know, we opened our first engagement window over a month ago on January 22nd, and we released our report three weeks ago on February 21st. And as Mark mentioned, we did have a successful open house. Molly, regret not having you there, but it was a wonderful time, and as Mark said, we'll bring more information back to you. We are here tonight again to give you just a little bit of an overview of the overview. You've had hopefully a few weeks to spend time with it, but we really do want to hear from you tonight, and I have a series of questions that I'll put up at the end, they were also in the memo in terms of framing the kinds of feedback we'd like, but obviously we welcome any feedback that you have. And then I wanted to highlight again, on this coming Sunday, an event that we have coming up that we're calling Imahina Open Space, and that is an opportunity to look inclusively at ways to include our community in a celebratory kickoff event where we're asking similar kinds of questions about their values, hopes, and concerns for the future. And we've done a lot of outreach to make that hopefully an inclusive process, and that'll be at Civic Area Park from 1:30 to 5:00, and we again welcome everyone from the board to attend, it'll be a lot of fun. So just as a reiteration, you might have remembered this slide at the study session that we held with you in November where we were talking about the development of the focus areas, but just wanted to reiterate now that the purpose of this first engagement window and the release of the system overview report is to help us develop these focus areas for the master plan. And I'll talk to you at the end about how we'll get through that in terms of a step wise schedule for that, but I just wanted to remind us that that's the intention, that we'll use both the community feedback as well as the conditions and future trends information in the report, as well as other inputs to develop these focus areas. And again, just a reminder, you might recognize this diagram from our project management plan, so just to let you know that we are on track, we're doing what we said we would. And as it relates to the report, we aligned this with two steps in the citywide engagement framework, and that was the first, that the report would help us and the community understand why we're embarking on this master plan and provide that baseline information to explain that in further depth, as well as to, as you see in step four, to what's called share that foundation of information and inquiry, and again, to set the stage with a fair amount of information to inform the kinds of dialogue and feedback that we get from the community. We organized the report around the charter purposes, the chapter titles are organized and described in a way that's accessible to the public, but they align with the charter purposes, and we wanted to make sure that we represent all of those charter purposes and describe them as best we could and evenly as we could across those charter purposes. And so we talked, for example, about our lands and our funding, and so we start by talking about the incredible legacy of acquisitions that we have over the last 120 years, starting back in 1898. And we acknowledge that there might be as few as 5,000 remaining acres to acquire to complete what has been previously described as a complete open space system. And in relation to that, we also talk about, in our funding chapter, about how 88% of our funding is supplied through sales tax increments, and how some of those are set to expire in the next few years. We also talk about, in our natural resources chapter and elsewhere, the importance of biodiversity and what that means to us now and in the future. And we talk about how the system is home to about 64 mammal species, over 1,000 plant species, and that we host here 26% of the species that are seen statewide, which is an incredible percentage considering that we only have about 45,000 acres throughout the whole state. We also talk, for the first time, about bringing together some comprehensive mapping and planning that's been done separately in two press plans. So in our forest plan and our grassland plan, we came up with conservation targets. We bring them together here in this report to talk about them in relation to each other, and we talk about how we're doing in relation to those conservation targets that we set out for ourselves. We also talk about the active restoration projects that are going on, and for example, as it relates to our grasslands, wetlands, and riparian areas, we have about 500 acres right now that are undergoing those active restoration projects. And we've completed about 75% of all of the projects that were called for in our forest ecology plan, and have treated about, as of 2017, about 1,400 acres of forest. We also talk about the individual and collective role that our water resources and our agricultural properties play. And so, for example, we talk about how between 70 and 90% of the perennial ephemeral streams in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan have been acquired by OSMP. And we talk about how we've also acquired a substantial portion of the flood plain and prevented encroachment into those flood plains, which is also a central charter purpose. And we talk about agriculture and the relationship to the water resources as it relates to the ditches, but also its individual value as it relates to the 15,000 acres that are under agricultural uses, which is a third of our system, which is tremendous. And we talk about how the agricultural partners that we have, the ranchers and the farmers that lease our lands, providing over $1 million in savings annually in terms of labor and material costs to the department, as far as the work and value that they provide. As it relates to visitor enjoyment, we talk not just about levels of use, which we do estimate now at about 6.25 visits annually, but we also talk about the way that the passive recreation use and the ways that people connect to nature are an opportunity to build a community of stewardship. And we talk about the way that those opportunities provide connections with nature and ways to really fall in love and protect the land, and so for example, we talk about the volunteer projects and the range that we provide across the system, anywhere from the trails and trailhead projects that we host a fair amount of in our mountain parks area, to the range of projects across our system around agricultural forestry, restoration, water, vegetation management. And so we really are trying to bring that into awareness also. We talk also about the cultural and scenic resources that are a part of our system, and we talk about the ways we can understand the 14,000 years of human history that this system demonstrates. And we talk about, for the first time, ways to document what we're calling preliminary landscape types, and that's a way that we've tried to describe and break up our system in ways that make sense to people, in ways that they experience the landscape, so that we can make sure that we protect the scenic resources that our community clearly values as well. We end the report with a nod to the future, and I wanted to just explain this in a slightly different way by going back to the beginning and looking at one of our first purchases in our system around the Chautauqua area, where if you can put yourselves in the minds of the community members at the time, they had particular aspirations in mind, particular ideas about why that landscape was important to protect. And you have to wonder whether or not they anticipated the larger trends that we would then see in that area. And so if you look at a similar picture today, and you look at the residential development that now has come right up against those open space purchases, you can see that they anticipated an amazing set of trends, that in so doing, they've now really defined that edge between our urban and natural landscapes, and have set an amazing course and a legacy that we're still inheriting today. And so we try and end the report with that sort of mindset. And... And so we try and end the report with that sort of mindset and ask a series of questions to start a conversation with the community about what's on their mind in terms of those big picture questions that might affect our future in ways that this did. And have started that community conversation to build on that set of questions. So next steps for the report, Mark touched on this, but just again, the comment window does end on March 30th. And then we will publish addenda to correct any factual errors that we have caught in the report. The larger set of suggestions that come in relation to the report, we will definitely maintain so that we can accommodate those in future updates to the report. In May, we're going to release a broader study about the 2016-2017 visitor survey and visitation study that has been completed. And we recognize that additional data may need to come into play as we start getting into strategy development this fall. And so we'll make available information, we will make information available at that time as it becomes relevant to the conversation with the community. Next steps as it relates to the master plan, we will be focused on developing these focus areas with the input that we've just received and with the information in the system overview report. And so we will be releasing a summary report that describes the engagement that we have, will have gone through in this first window, as well as the preliminary focus areas that result from that. And so staff and consultants will take an attempt to suggest what the preliminary focus areas are. And we'll make that available through a two-week public review process online to allow the public to just weigh in one more time on the initial analysis that we've done. We will hold a joint study session, which hopefully is on your calendars, except perhaps not yours, Molly will regret not having you there.
You can come anyway.
And that's with the full board and council to further refine and discuss those preliminary focus areas. We'll then come back to the board in July and ask for you to formally recommend the revised and therefore hopefully final focus areas to council. And then finally ask council to approve those focus areas in August. And so that concludes my presentation. These are the questions that I have, we've proposed that might frame your feedback, but again, we welcome any questions or comments to you. We're wondering if in your mind, the report achieved its stated purpose as we described it and whether any of the topics that have emerged in the report resonate with you in terms of, you know, potential focus areas or just thoughts that you think are important for us to keep in mind going forward? Just initial thoughts, if you care to share those, as well as any other feedback. So with that, I'd open it up for discussion.
Who would like to start? Go for it, Kurt.
Sure.
You just look like you're dying.
And I don't have a prepared statement, I just think it's an astonishing piece of work. I think we will always identify things that could be added to it. But I'm not sure we would be able to address those things in as coherent a way, not having this document to start from, because it makes it possible to conceive of adding on and in doing it in a way that can be communicated to the public. I mean, we can always take reports and put them on a shelf, a scientific report that Brian does and nobody ever reads. But this gives you a framework for building on the public discussion, I just think that's wonderful. This is going to pay dividends for 20 years. Just the development of all the consistent graphics is a fabulous thing because you've pulled out for your presentation. I mean, it's all there and it's always something you can build on. So anyway, I'm just astonished at the quality of it. And as I say, I know folks will continue to identify things we need to add to it, but it's an amazing piece of work and I feel like each time I open it up, I see some new cross linkage that I didn't recognize before. So I think staff will continue to unpack this thing during the master plan process in a lot of different ways that we may not have even anticipated yet. So thank you for, everybody for, is there anybody that didn't work on this?
It is, I will admit, about half of our department that contributed to this, so that's a pretty good cross section. And I did, I'm sorry, also should have mentioned too, that because we have staff members in the audience, any particular questions you have, hopefully they can also help us answer if you'd like to do that tonight too.
So first I would echo what Kurt said, I also appreciated, I would say, the tone of the report. It's, you know, appropriately congratulatory, but not, I think, obsessively or self-indulgently so. Well, you know, I think there's a lot to be proud of, but there's a lot of challenges and we don't want to get so caught up in self-praise that we lose sight of the fact that we have some real challenges to deal with here as well. And I thought the tone was, you know, kind of struck approximately the right balance. I thought, you know, in some ways, the hard issue, and it's the one, and to some extent that Jackie was certainly hitting on is, and Kurt was talking about is, you know, how do you deal with the right level of detail? It's certainly true that on every issue that this touches upon, one tends to say, well, but what about this and what about this and what about this? And, you know, a 500-page overview probably would be less effective than this one and you had to make a lot of choices. But at the same time, I think, and I'm just looking at the hard copy and it may be that the electronic version answers what I'm about to say, but I think if this hasn't been done, one thing that would be useful is to have hyperlinks whenever you're discussing something, you know, to say, you know, more detail on the health of this particular habitat can be found here. And I realize that itself can be an enormous task, given the number of studies and plans that have been done. And, you know, there too, you'll have to engage in some selectivity, but I think we have to accept the fact that to get from here to some of the more specific policy recommendations, people are going to want to say, I need to know more about X. And where X has already been collected somewhere, if there's some way of hyperlinking this to the right page.
It is, right?
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. I'm sure there's room for improvement though, I mean, we tried, yeah.
We can see that in the print version to some extent. Anytime some words are bolded out with a very faint underline under them, that's a hot link to something else. I'm trying to find an example and it's not jumping out at me, sorry.
Because I had thought there was, you know, that we have hundreds of studies of the various flora and fauna and how they're faring and I don't know how much of, I think we do need to collect more of that in some way that people can use this to access it. Because I think there'll be, you know, I don't know if, I sense it hasn't been, you know, more of that could be done. So anyhow, a thought. I, I'll have some micro-level edits that I'll just email along. One thing that I was left wanting to understand better is the source of, and this may all be in the forthcoming visitor report, but, you know, one of the things that really jumped out at me was the enormous growth in usage that certainly far exceeds the growth in Boulder's population and I think probably exceeds, on a percentage basis, the growth in population in the more surrounding areas, which suggests there's a lot of possible explanations. But since a lot of what we're trying to do is figure out, what do we think the future's going to look like, understanding a little bit more about what's driving those trends, is it, you know, whatever's driving those trends is important to trying to figure out, all right, what do we, you know, what's our best guess about what this is going to look like? Was one area where I thought it would be really helpful to have a little bit deeper dive, since that's going to factor pretty heavily in a lot of the strategies. But I mean, I'll leave it at that for now. But I do think this is, you know, a wonderful document. I also wanted to say, I appreciated the fact that while a lot of people contributed to this, the voice is remarkably consistent throughout. It doesn't feel like something that's just pasted together, which collaborative reports often do. And that, I know that's not easy.
Thank you so much for saying that. And I will offer, Tom, that there is quite a bit more information certainly coming in that study in May, but if you do have any specific questions, I would also say that Dionne is here to answer any, if you have some for tonight.
I would say, but one more thing and then I'll be quiet, which is there, from time to time, and there's been a number of either editors or editorials about this in the Daily Camera over the last six to 12 months, is understanding what the relationship is between open space and housing issues. Not that, I mean, we're not responsible for the housing side of the equation, but in my opinion, there is a perception, and I think it's a misperception, that the acquisitions that we're making are coming at the expense of affordable housing. And that, I think, it may be true that 20, 30 years ago, there were some acquisitions which had we not made them, would have resulted in some significant housing. But I don't think that's true over the, at least the last decade, and I don't think it's true of the acquisitions that we're likely to be making going forward. And I think it's a fairly significant issue in the public's eye about a perceived tension between funding open space and is this coming at the expense of affordable housing? And it may be worth explaining, especially in recent years, what would have happened had we not bought this property? You know, how many houses might have been built? And I think the answer is very few. And what, you know, in general, are we looking at going forward? Because I think that's a significant misperception that's worth correcting. Or if you agree with the perception, then, you know, so be it. But my sense is it's a largely a misperception about what kind of acquisitions we make these days and what would happen if we didn't make them.
Yeah, I'll just add that, I mean, it is an extremely impressive report and, you know, I've only had a year on this board and there's still so much for me to learn. And this has been an insanely helpful document for me, and so therefore I'm very hopeful that it's an insanely helpful document for the rest of the community. Speaking, building off of the trends discussion that Tom was saying, and this is not trends in terms of like the last chapter, but anytime there was like a table, such as table 5.4, State of the Grasslands, where it's like, you know, here's an attribute, here's a condition, I found myself wondering, well, when was, when has that condition previously been evaluated? How long have we been monitoring these particular characteristics? And when are we going to be, you know, in my head, I'm trying to establish those trend lines for those things as a way to evaluate how we're doing. And I was, that context wasn't jumping out at me easily. So I wanted to provide that feedback. And then I think it might be worth calling out on each of the snapshots, so, you know, the first page of every chapter, which particular plans in the department are most relevant in that topic area. So as you go through reading the text, you know, it's like, and see the visitor master plan for more detail, and see this plan, but you could just call it out on the snapshot. I think that that's another way to demonstrate that there's very important sideboards, if you will, grounding a lot of the discussion we'll be having under the master plan. And I pretty much love having this on my bedside table because I read a little bit more of it every night. So thank you for the hard copy.
You bet. Anything we can do?
And my kids love the maps, they're always asking me questions.
Oh, nice. That's great.
So I'll chime in and mirror kind of what everybody said, you're in great input on that. I felt like I wanted to see a little bit more specifics on the cultural resources inventory overview. I just felt like it was a little bit vague and I wanted to see that maybe a little more expansive, because I was looking for more specifics on the conditions of the buildings, on ag lands and things like that. And I realized that that's a good jump off for the master plan, you know, and these things can be more expansive in there. But, and I was noting with Jackie Remaley, what her comments too, it did feel to me like some of the ecosystems could be expanded on as well. And it does concern me that a primary contributor like the Native Plant Society wouldn't have gotten it here, so I'm sure that was a minor oversight that will be remedied. And then when you ask which topics or aspects of the report seem especially important to me would be the long-term planning and the financial aspects of the long-term planning. Of course, my big ones always cost allocation, but, you know, where do these large overhead pieces come into play, into the planning aspect? And so that would be something that would be important to me to see in the master plan in a larger section. And I thought it was an amazing amount of work. I mean, it feels like little mini master plan, so it's a great place to start and expand on. And so I thought it was very comprehensive and surprisingly so. I thought it was going to be a little smaller document.
There you go. I got the copy.
So, thank you.
Sure, you bet.
You know, the only complaint I've heard from people is that they don't get their own hard copy.
It won't cost you a fortune to get one.
I did run into at least one person at the open house that had printed it at Kinko's for 20 bucks, so.
For 20? Okay, that's good to know.
For 20, yeah, and I bet you could charge 25 if somebody's looking.
At the Kinko's we got referred to, I was quoted $710 for free copies.
Seriously?
Yes.
We have made reference copies available throughout the community, so we have one at the library, we have one at the annex, one over at our Cherryvale property, one at the Ranger Cottage. Oh my goodness.
It was a place to buy them at a reasonable price.
Any other questions or thoughts from the board?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Great job.
Next up is an update, and we thought this was especially appropriate for Molly's last meeting, is the flood recovery update. And Jim Reader is providing this update. And one thing I would add is Jim's getting ready in further appreciation of Molly's service, is that really Molly's service didn't start with the board. Molly's been a part of the system for, I think, three decades. And I think she visited the Boulder Valley Farm 30 years ago with staff and was a part of the board for that purchase. So what a wonderful chapter to close there.
Okay, Jim Reader, Trails and Facilities Manager. And yeah, it is interesting that 2013, four and a half years ago, we had a flood and we've been working on it ever since. And that encompasses almost your entire service here for open space. So, but I'm going to talk about trails basically tonight, but I wanted to give you this update or information also on the other types of damage. It wasn't just trails that were damaged, as you know, and you can see the dollar amounts there, obviously trails is the big one. And as we go through these, I want you to keep in mind that we had to, when we did the recovery, the repair work, we had to take historic, protect our historic features, our cultural features. We wanted to maintain the character and we'll point out some of those things here. And in addition to that, we wanted to protect the natural resources. And you'll note that there's a lack of natural resources really on that damage list. It's not because they weren't damaged. We feel that the natural resources were damaged into the millions of dollars, but they aren't FEMA reimbursable. FEMA doesn't reimburse for those, so. But this, the picture there is of Flatiron Vista, you can see some of the damages as the water came across that particular trailhead. You'll probably remember this map, this one's dated March of 14. About six months afterwards, you can see the 23 of our trailheads were damaged and 90 trails were damaged either slight, significant or severe. Those are the green, red and yellow colors on that map. The purple are the undamaged ones. So you can see it was fairly significant across the system. And what I'm going to do now is go through And what I'm going to do now is go through several different types of damage we have. This is by no means a complete look at all of our trails. We obviously don't have time for that tonight. But we had trails like Tohee, where the water got on the trail and basically created a gully. And where we, whoops, back up, where we could, we rerouted trails like that. Okay? Other issues, the Royal Arch Trail, obviously a bigger drainage, a lot more water, bringing rocks, trees, all that sort of thing down there. Really basically wiped out the trail crossing at that point. We replaced it. One very similar, but a little bit different, is the Shadow Canyon Trail, where again, it came down, wiped out the trail, and we went in and put in some steps. Not all the damage was caused by water running down the trail. We had several places where we had landslides, debris slides. This is at Sanitas, where the landslide came down and basically got onto the trail. This is a little close-up look of that trail, how it looked and how it looks today. On down the trail at Sanitas, where Silver Lake crosses the ditch or crosses the trail, what it looked like that day and what it looks like today. The road to Green Mountain Lodge, basically, water got on that road, and it was a road. We also had a trail, served as a trail, but basically, that became the creek. And instead of trying to force water back where it didn't want to be, we moved the trail up the hill and rerouted it there. You've seen these pictures of Chapman. Did want to point out that one of the issues was getting water off of trails, and particularly that trail. And you can see some of the stonework that we did in order to maintain the character of that CCC trail, so. Another one that we had an issue with was Chautauqua. You know, you can see here where the water and the mud, I don't know what that is, 50, 60 feet wide. And obviously, we couldn't live with that, so we did a major repair at that. There is some reroute of that particular trail with a unique, innovative, we think, treatment for the trail surface. Last time I was out, it was holding up pretty good. I haven't checked it recently, but we hope that it does hold up pretty well for us. While we were working on it, on that trail, we also decided to put in a couple of badly needed gathering areas, viewing areas. These were not FEMA reimbursable because they weren't there before, but we felt that it was worth putting those in. Another trail issue was the, some of these trails that we have on N-Car, the Bear Connector. That one, we would not have put back there. We would have rerouted it if it weren't on federal land. Being on federal land, the process is pretty complex to get that moved. And so, instead of doing that, we hardened or reinforced that trail in its footprint. Here and on Bear Canyon, I know most of, probably all of you know, that the culvert that was in that crossing washed out, and we replaced it with a larger culvert. Many of the things that we, of the structures, actual structures that we put back, you will note, are larger than the ones that came out. And that's because the ones that were in there before came out. Couldn't handle the water. No sense putting something back that's not going to handle it. In many cases, depending on where it was, we couldn't get a permit to do that anyway. But we had to adjust the size, and so we did put in the larger culvert and the stonework there next to the bat pool. And we got, received some recommendations from board members on how to deal with that. And so, we will be making a change. The material is on order, and I think the work is scheduled to be done this month, so. Another project where we got some, asked for and got some recommendations from the board was on this Gun Creek Bridge, where we could have put in a very large bridge. And we understood the reasoning, and we think, quite honestly, and some of us at least, being one of them, think that we ended up with a much better project. And I really liked that one. So we appreciate that, that input. The new Doughty Draw Bridge, it's the Doughty Draw, not the Draw Bridge. And another situation, a little different, the South Boulder Creek Trail. In that, that location, we had two, four, five-foot diameter culverts, concrete culverts before the flood. They were always giving us trouble in the spring, high water. They would catch debris. And in my time that I've been here, which isn't all that long, I know there's at least twice where it held the water back. It wasn't really a flood, it was just high water held the water back so much that it did, in fact, go across South Boulder Creek. During the flood, the water was doing that, and we were asked by the state engineer to remove that, those culverts, which we did. And then we have replaced it with this bridge. Devil's Thumb is another place where a small bridge washed out, and we replaced it with a larger bridge. This, where you can see at Gregory, which I hope that bridge didn't burn today, the smaller bridge that washed out, and then the new bridge that we put in there. So, that's a brief look at some of the projects we've done. What's left to do? We have the South Foothills Trail Repair, which is just north of Wonderland Lake. That work started last week. We've pegged it, the contractors pegged it as a three-week project, so we hope that it's done within the next two or three weeks. And the other one is the Bear Creek Canyon Trail. While that trail, if you hike it, it looks to be done, and it is. But there's a section of about 200 to 300 feet that need to be rerouted. Again, that is federal land, so we have to get the permits and that sort of thing, and we're working on that. But at some point, we will be rerouting that trail, because right now, the trail goes through wetland mitigation land. So, we'll have to get that done. And the other thing is the closeout reporting. We have to do that. Currently, we have one full-time person at Open Space working on closeout paperwork with a couple of our financial folks doing part-time work, and we're working with a couple of folks at City Finance. With all those folks in place and working on it, we still think it'll take about a year to do that work. This gives you just a couple of brief looks at the type of information that we have to put together. This is just the list of addendums, attachments for one of those reports. Other flood-related work, these are not FEMA eligible, but we're working on those. Boulder Falls is in progress. Hedge Cock Bridge, we hope to have a plan and get on that shortly. And the Four Mile Canyon Creek Bridge. One more FEMA project that's eligible is the East Boulder White Rocks Bridge. That is for a different flood, so we had on a different little schedule for that, so we're not up against the deadline on that one. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Comment I would like to make before we go to questions is that, from my standpoint, I'm really kind of grateful that I was working for Open Space when this happened. It is a, I hope, a once-in-a-lifetime experience. But it was, it did create a lot of work. It was challenging work. And in the process, we had to defer a lot of, well, everything, basically, that we've been planning for the last four years, and we've kind of let those things go, and we're now getting back to that. But it gave me a much better idea of the power of nature, and what it can do, and how much we need to work with nature rather than try and fight nature, so. With that, I'll answer any questions, try to answer any questions.
Tom? I know this, as you said, this isn't part of the 2013 flood, and so the timeline for getting the work done on the East Boulder Crossing is different. But I'm curious to know, you know, where that is, since obviously, that trail is effectively, well, it's effectively closed, where you can't get very far until the bridge, you know, gets replaced.
Right. Basically, first of all, we've never, we haven't focused on that bridge until about the last year, because it was just a lower priority because of the 15 flood. But we've been going back and forth with the county and the city on permits. We think we're to the point where we're going to be able to get a permit real quickly. And our hope at this point, and we really think this will happen, is that we'll get that done, get the bridge repaired before high water this spring.
No.
We think, we think we can do that. Now, we've split that part of the project out from the stream restoration. The stream restoration will probably be more like a fall project. But, but to get that bridge back will be big, especially for the equestrians, so.
Thanks.
This is an amazing amount of work. It's just so amazing to look at it. And I wanted a lot of the public to be aware of what we've been doing, because I think there's been so much input from, you know, the public of, you know, what, you're still working on the flood. And, you know, it had a huge impact to everything. And systemically, you know, not just in one locale, but, you know, it branched to other trails. But it's amazing to look at how much has been done by staff in a short amount of time, because a lot of these are really big engineering feats to solve and design and implicate, implement. So, thank you for, thank you for bringing it in, but thank you for the work also.
You bet. And I will have to credit the whole staff. I mean, the day after the flood, everybody went out and were on teams to assess the damage across the system. And so, there isn't anybody who was on staff at that point who didn't get involved. And from that point on, more or less, everybody was still involved. And I really want to credit the volunteer staff, because we were inundated with volunteers. And it took a lot of work just to organize that effort. And they worked on a lot of different things. I want to credit our ecological staff, who, like I say, had their own issues to deal with. Millions of dollars worth of damage to natural resources, but, but we, from a trail standpoint, were calling on them to help us get these permits too. And they were very helpful, and without them, we wouldn't have accomplished half of what we'd done. So, it was a truly a department effort.
It's been a great attitude to, I mean, you know, I've never seen people look so tired right after that flood. But you didn't hear the complaints, all that there could have been meant to, so, yeah.
I did have one question. I mean, to build off of your, your new appreciation for the power of water and Mother Nature, what lessons have been learned from the flood recovery process that are going to inform our new maintenance regime on the system going forward?
Well, several, actually. But first of all, one of the things that we learned is, is that we have to make sure that we size things adequately. And in the past, I don't know that we've oftentimes done any study or engineering on those. And with Kelly Wassabach on staff now, an engineer, we're making sure that that happens. Obviously, with the bridges, you know, we've replaced more bridges in the last four years than I thought, I even thought we had on the system, but certainly that we dealt with before. And so, again, we have to make sure that, that we work with the county and the city and the floodplain folks to make sure that what we put in there will stay, stand. I mentioned on, well, on this trail also, where water got on the trail and created gullies, we've, we're putting in a lot more structures and features to get that water off of the trail, so it doesn't run on the trail.
Okay.
So, those are the basic things, and not really rocket science or anything like that. It's just that those things, when, when the system went in, weren't high on the list. High on the list was getting from here to there. We have trails like the connector, N-Car, Bear Connector, that are fall line. And we would not put that there today, but we have to deal with it. But, you know, if we look at the trails that had been reworked within the next, the last two, three years before the flood, they all survived very well. And so, we think, we think we can handle it. Obviously, every, every trail's different, and every rainstorm's different.
Yeah. And in that context, as flood recovery projects were done, like, this was an example where the trail was determined to stay in the same place, but you engineered the hell out of it to make sure the water wasn't going to run on the trail again?
Yep.
And then in other contexts, it was appropriate to reroute, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
Thanks.
I'd just say I get a lot of comments from the public about how beautiful the work is and how impressed they are. So just generally speaking, I don't expect you to get out your dollars and cents. Are we still pretty comfortable with where things are going with FEMA and reimbursement in that whole process?
Yeah, you know, we won't know until we close out and submit, basically, our bill. But the, you know, Joel Wagner at the city is working, basically, at the one point, he was meeting at least weekly with the state folks. And the way this works is we submit to the state, they approve it or not, and then they send it on to FEMA. And so he was meeting with the state folks every week and got a pretty good working relationship. We think we're going to be in good shape. We think we understand what needs to be done, and we're doing that. And so, we won't get reimbursed for everything that we've done. We knew that upfront, like the features there on Chautauqua. But I think we'll be likely to get reimbursed for 90, 95% of what we, what we think we should and what FEMA thinks we should. I mean, as far as, you know, their criteria was that we put it back to the form and function as it was before and not make these huge improvements. And so where we've done that, we expect that we'll be in good shape, so. But it will take a while.
Always does.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jim.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and thank, thank you for the whole board, for all the, all the support that we've received through this whole process. We appreciate it. That really does.
Moving to matters from the board. We have our process committee update.
It was easier to give updates when we had the meeting just a few hours before. I've forgotten now what we did. Darren's going to sneak out of the room, probably. There's Mark. Thank you, Mark.
She's been working really, really hard, and you might have heard she had a little bit of scratchy throats.
Yeah, no kidding.
Trying to recover from a cold at open house and open space board meeting. She didn't get to go to the happy hour last night for one of our engagement groups. I was like, I'll follow up, because I was at the process committee meeting, and thank goodness for Leah, we have some notes.
Yeah, thankfully.
We had some public comment from Karen and Ray with suggestions about access to the system overview report and information, asking people to find, let us know they found out about the survey opportunity. And we spent some time talking about the system overview report itself that had been released. There was some question about making sure people could find the master plan process on the Open Space homepage of our website, so we've addressed that. That's been taken care of. Let folks know that the micro-engagement had begun and that the outreach to the Spanish-speaking community was underway. And then there was just, I think, a lot of questions about how we were going to take the information from the open house and the micro-engagement, these kind of, the hopes, the values, and the concerns, and turn those into the focus areas. And Darren was able to say that through her work previously with the Park Service, she's been involved in processes that allow for the consolidation of comments through, it's a pretty straightforward way of putting this into spreadsheets and trying to bring like materials together under particular headings. We've had similar experience through our other planning efforts here at Open Space and Mountain Parks. And we'll be working with Amanda and the subconsultants, working with Design Workshop to assist us in that effort, to take a first run at it, as Darren described. It's kind of important for the process committee to clarify that we're not really voting, so we're really just trying to identify what are, what are the issues that are out there and pull them together into similar categories. And there's a desire to have that process available. And there is a desire to have that process available and explained before everything was done, so there was some transparency and we're certainly committed to that. And that was, I think, kind of the general focus. We introduced the fact about the open house and the Imahina event and invited the process committee. Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, Tom, for being there to host at the open house. And we'll hopefully see you again at Imahina. And we were happy enough to have Aaron and Mary there as well, so that was great. A lot of good support from council. Mayor was there as well.
And Mark, I tail end on that, since I think some of us in the process committee were the ones that suggested we have an open house. And that's the hard part, you know, is to make the suggestion. And then the staff gets to do everything else. I just want to commend the staff and everybody that put that event on. It was extraordinary, I thought. Maybe Open Space does this all the time, but I thought it was a remarkable recruiting of staff who know about all these different chapters and areas. And I just heard so many interesting conversations between the public and the staff for three hours. I mean, people stayed and had a lot of conversations, so my thanks. It was a lot of fun to be at.
It was great. Thank you for the heavy lift of suggesting.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Sure the weather was nice. And we certainly did have a lot of that. I know that myself and other staff members were kind of glad for those breaks where you and Tom and Aaron and Mary were there to welcome people because it gave us a chance to sit down for a second. It was talking for an hour and a half without even noticing that it had gone on that long.
Yeah.
Oh, I got to take a breath, wet my whistle. So, yeah, I think people had some really, really productive conversations.
There were two scheduling issues I wanted to touch upon. One was the next process committee meeting got moved a week back. So it normally would be the last Wednesday of March, but we moved it to the first Wednesday of April because of spring break. So just for those who are interested in attending, it got moved.
April 4th.
Yep. And then the other, which was a more substantive discussion, was that we, a proposal was put forward to have the focus areas sort of set by August. And I know I, and I think others, shared the concern that whether that's a good idea depends a lot on how robust the focus areas are. If the focus areas are just, you know, like one or two or three word sort of topics, that that is probably too leisurely a schedule because we only have a year really to get from there till the plan is done. Conversely, if the focus areas are pretty robust descriptions of, you know, what's the real guts of the issue, then maybe getting them done by August isn't, even then, I would say I'm still concerned that that's too leisurely. I'm not sure we fully have set any sort of different schedule, but I think there was some sense that we need to sort of link those two concepts of what is the schedule for the focus areas in relationship to how ambitious is the work product? And, you know, more time for a more ambitious work product and less time if there's sort of a less ambitious work product.
And so we did commit to bring to the process committee in April kind of a mock-up of what some of the information about a focus area would look like. Kind of laid out that April was really the time that we needed to do the analysis of the information that we received during the first engagement window. And then May was our opportunity to, you know, provide those updates to the open space board, process committee, city council, get some feedback on that. Scheduling a joint study session has some issues associated with council and availability and to some degree, board availability. So that was a desire line to have that. And then to have a recommendation, a formal recommendation from the board to council, we proposed that for the following month, July, and then August would be the timeline for council approval. So some of that has to do with just the way that the calendar works. But I think there will be substantive material developed with these focus areas as well. But I think we'll hear more from you and the other members of the process committee about that.
Other questions?
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. So we have a request from city council at the charter committee meeting to discuss the idea of doing an expansion from five to seven members. And are, this is just, you want general feedback on this concept?
Right. And this, these are the words from the charter committee members themselves, what's in this very brief memo.
Okay.
And the staff can collect whatever feedback you provide tonight and we'll send it to the city clerk, who will provide it at the next charter committee meeting of the council.
Maybe, I know there's history to this. I know the idea's been batted around for a long time. And so I looked at the senior board members to remind us of, or staff, what the historic arguments had been or what prompted consideration of an expansion. Any thoughts? Love to hear.
It was brought up years ago. We discussed it at one point, thought it was going to be eight at one point, and now it's seven, which makes a lot more sense. But, you know, my, the thoughts that they had at the time were to get a broader view and a bigger perspective and give more opportunity, which I think is certainly a good approach because, you know, it is difficult with a small board to have, you know, a lot of input. And it seems kind of go, you know, one way or another at each appointment. And if there were multiple appointments, that might give us a broader context. What's your thoughts, Tom?
I mean, I certainly have heard this bandied about a fair amount. And I think one, just to give the history, I think one objective was exactly what Molly said, that the more people you have, the wider, you know, in theory, the wider range of opinions you can have represented. I've heard some council members express the view that if you have more people, it takes a little bit of the pressure off of any given appointment. I'm not so sure. I mean, if the board is hypothetically three, you know, however you, whatever dynamics you perceive, if you think it's three, three, it's still, the next one has every bit as much impact. And of course, if you have seven, then two out of every five years, you have to appoint two people. And I'm not, you know, I think that, whether that is, strikes me that that's arguably in a sort of a higher impact situation than where you're, every year you're appointing one out of five. But that is at least, you know, one of the arguments that gets advanced. I'll just, I mean, my own two cents is that, yeah, there's no doubt if you had more people, you can have more points of view. I do think that, you know, from my perspective, there's a little bit of it that, you know, a little bit of is it, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And I think the board actually functions quite well for the most part. You know, every time we do a planning process, and we've been through a lot of them, we're always start with, you know, the charter is a sideboard. You can't touch the charter. And there's some logic, I think, to that, to saying we don't want to kind of visit charter documents unless there's some really compelling rationale why we should be going all the way back to the founding documents. And, you know, the composition, the board itself is a charter, is in the charter. So I think, to my point of view, if you're going to put something before the voters and all that entails in terms of asking them to really think about this issue and how do you want this to, you know, be done going forward, we ought to have a compelling rationale. And I'm not sure, you know, that exists. I do, I do find one of the virtues of a five-person board is that I think every person really feels like I'm speaking for myself. There's only five of us. There's plenty of time for each person to really robustly express their point of view. You know, I don't, I think as boards get larger, and, you know, I don't know if this is necessarily true of seven, but in general, as boards get larger, there is less of that individual speaking and boards become more factions. You know, there's two or three people who have a point of view and they, you know, maybe one of them sort of speaks to that point of view. And, you know, I think there's a real trade-off there that I think, you know, potentially you start to lose that if you want, as boards get larger. So I think there's pros and cons. I at least don't feel like this board suffers from points of view. So, yeah, that's my two cents.
If I could add a few things to build off of Tom's comments. My sense is that you don't get a greater diversity of expertise or opinions just by adding more people. And if the council were so driven to suggest that we needed seven members on the board, it might feel appropriate to have some of those members be, have specific roles. The member A needs to be an ecologist. Member B needs to be a recreation specialist, something like that. There is precedent for that in other city boards. Yeah, like Boulder Junction, there has to be a couple of residents. Or Water Resources Board, I think there has to be an engineer. There's Design Advisory Board, there has to be an architect or some, you know, so there's definitely precedence for having roles be part of the board composition. I have concerns about a board that grows too large simply from an operational perspective. I know that our county counterparts, the POSAC, is a nine-member board. And whoa, can some of those meetings drag on. Oh, my goodness. So if there's already proclivity for a lot of robust discussion in this board, at a five-member board, going to seven may expand that unreasonably. I don't think that the public adequately appreciates, or maybe even council, how much staff time goes into informing each of us behind the scenes. And to expect that staff burden to grow proportionally with the addition of two more members, I think that that definitely should be taken into account. Yeah, those are the main points I wanted to bring up. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think I have a strong view on it. I think my view coming on to the board, just because of what the board had been through, there seemed to be some rationale to going to seven. But I agree about the diffusion of responsibility issue that you can, particularly if there were nine, I, I'm not sure we would all take every issue as seriously as we take now. To some extent, I do think this is a council decision and it's about diversity. If council feels like with five slots, we just don't get the diversity we'd like, we're constantly, particularly right now, trying to reach out to more communities in open space and in Boulder. And so that would me, to me, be a reasonable rationale for it rather than the number of votes and the difficulty of making one appointment versus two or something like that. So I guess that would be my feedback, is that if council feels like we need to be more diverse, I think it's in their hands to say we should add members. But I agree with you folks that I don't see a serious problem that we have to solve right
Is that what you wanted?
We were very furious.
Okay, great.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. We will provide your feedback to the charter committee. Thank you very much.
And then I have one little item that I thought I would just bring up and mention to you. I had a meeting with staff a couple of days ago, and I don't know if anything will come of it, but because we have so many memorial opportunities that are coming up in the future, I had a concept to come up with a legacy trail, a part of a trail that we could dedicate just to founders or as a memorial that, you know, would be something that's handicapped accessible, where we could put rocks and things on it. We had a discussion about it. It's going to kind of come back, and I think a little bit of input is going to be given. But I figured I would put it out there, and if it comes forward, you'll know what the idea was. But it does feel like we get a lot of requests for benches and things like that with relatively few pullouts that we can really dedicate. It seems like it could make some sense to have a dedicated section of a trail that could be used for educational purposes. So I felt like that could be something we could consider in the future.
I don't know if anyone from staff is able to report on what council did yesterday, but is, on 3/11 Mapleton?
It's April 3rd. They're having a public hearing on April 3rd.
Okay.
Okay, I was informed.
Yes. Okay, are we moving to the?
Yes.
To the next ones, to the Stengel Pond?
Yeah, and before we move specifically into the individual, the two individual acquisition projects that are before you tonight, I thought I would just do a brief introduction. Dan Burke, Real Estate Services Supervisor. And we're really excited to bring forward to you tonight two land acquisition projects that the staff has been working on. And as you may recall, last fall, I made some comments before we presented you with the Snyder and the suits land acquisition projects. And sort of the summary of what I discussed with you at that time was the fact that it's likely going forward that as staff prioritizes and assess and evaluates potential acquisition projects, that what we're likely to find are projects that have certain things in common, such as they may be in holdings or they may have large common boundaries with other open space properties. And that is because as we are going from developing into a mature open space system, the bulk of a lot of our work is concentrating on how we can fill in the system as opposed to growing the system out. So that is sort of a natural evolution of a system as it matures. And certainly tonight, the two projects that you'll be considering, you know, fit that bill. And both Luke and Bethany, as they present their projects, will describe, you know, how they are in holdings, as the case of the Stengel Pond, or if they have large common open space connections, as with the case with the Fort Chambers and the Poor Man acquisition project. But the other story being told tonight is also the one of persistence and patience. As Luke McKay will soon describe to you, the Stengel Pond is a small piece of property that the city was unable to acquire when it negotiated the purchase of all the surrounding lands, and that was over 35 years ago. And in the case of the Fort Chambers Poor Man property that Bethany Collins will describe, staff has long viewed this property as a high priority for adding to the system's open space system. But circumstances have only recently coalesced to allow us the opportunity to move forward with a successful negotiation in that case. So one of the really interesting aspects of being involved in real estate, especially real estate here with the department, is that while you need to be prepared to act quickly, certainly, when circumstances dictate that, that more often than not, it's really patience and perseverance that is called for and really case in point with both the Stengel Pond and the Chambers and Poor Man projects that you're going to see tonight. So I just sort of wanted to set that stage, that some of the acquisitions that come before you may seem new, but in the case of staff working on it, it may be the fourth or fifth property agent that is sort of working on this thing. So with that, I want to, we'll first turn things over to Luke McKay, who will present to you the Stengel Pond acquisition project.
Good evening. As Dan said, I'm here tonight to give a very brief presentation on what staff is calling the Stengel Two Pond property and to request that the board recommend to city council to approve the purchase of the property, which includes the pertinent water and mineral rights for $5,000 for open space and mountain parks purposes. So the Stengel Two Pond property is a one-acre inholding of the 306-acre Stengel Two open space property located south of Eldorado Springs Drive and the Doughty Draw Trailhead. The property consists primarily of a man-made pond surrounded by mixed grass prairie and riparian shrublands and is part of the BVCP acquisition area in the Open Space and Mountain Parks Acquisition Update Plan. Parks Acquisition Update Plan. In addition to acquiring an inholding within a large swath of contiguous open space, the primary driver behind this acquisition is that the pond provides high-quality emergent habitat that may support northern leopard frogs, a tier-one species of greatest conservation need in Colorado, an increasingly rare species here in the Boulder Valley. Although OSMP staff has not surveyed the pond for amphibians, northern leopard frogs do breed on ponds in the vicinity of the Stengel Two Property, making it probable that this ephemeral pond does provide habitat, breeding habitat for northern leopard frogs during their, some stage in their life cycle. Post-acquisition, OSMP stewardship of the pond will provide management and restoration opportunities to improve habitat conditions for this critical species. This may include removing the canopy cover surrounding the pond to allow more light to the shoreline in order to create basking opportunities for northern leopard frogs, and to encourage the growth of rushes and sedges, which is its preferred habitat. It's also worth mentioning that, given the property's proximity to the Doughty Draw Trail, the acquisition of this inholding will enable OSMP to better ensure the protection of scenic resources and visitor experiences along the Doughty Draw Trail. And I promised you it was short. Therefore, staff is requesting that the Open Space Board Trustees recommend that Boulder City, sorry, staff has requested that the Open Space Board Trustees recommend to Boulder City Council to approve the purchase of approximately one acre of land and the pertinent water and mineral rights located south of 3794 Eldorado Springs Drive from Jane Anne Stengel for $5,000 for open space and mountain parks purposes. And with that, I can take any questions you may have on this project.
I like that it only has a few zeros past.
We saved some of those zeros for later.
I just had one. So, you said you don't know of any active leopard frogs? We assume that there is an active population there, but given it's ephemeral?
Given it's ephemeral, it likely doesn't support bullfrogs, which directly competes with northern leopard frogs, since it's, even though it's surrounded by open space, it's still a private, currently, you know, privately owned, so I think that's one of the reasons that it hasn't been surveyed by the department's ecological staff. But, yeah, given the fact, given the features of the pond, its size, the fact that it is ephemeral, and then northern leopard frog activity that has been monitored by staff in the vicinity of this property, our ecologists are pretty confident that the pond does provide habitat for, actively provides habitat for northern leopard frogs.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we ready to go to motion?
Is anyone signed up for public hearing? Leah?
I will. I will so move. I moved that the, wait, you ready? I moved that the Open Space Board of Trustees recommend that the Boulder City Council approve the purchase of approximately one acre of land and the pertinent mineral and water rights located south of 3794 Eldorado Springs Drive from Jane Anne Stengel for $5,000 for open space and mountain parks purposes.
Second. All in paper.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work on that. After 30 fine beers.
And now, Bethany Collins, property agent, will present with you the Fort Chambers Poor Man Acquisition Project.
Oh, I think it's still. Oh, there it is. Sorry.
He keeps calling me the poor man.
I know.
Oh, did I say poor man? Have I been saying poor man?
Poor man.
Poor Farm.
Which supported the poor men.
And women.
And women. Good evening, everybody. This agenda item is a request for recommendation to approve the purchase of the Fort Chambers Poor Farm Open Space Property. I'd like to take a little bit of time, probably a little longer than Luke, to present some photos in detail what makes this proposed acquisition so special. And a few of you were lucky enough to visit the property and see its unique values in person. All right. As a quick overview, the proposed acquisition is the Fort Chambers Poor Farm Property recognizable from North 63rd Street by the Red Queen Anne Style Farmhouse. It is 110 acres, or 110-acre agricultural complex featuring, among other exceptional attributes, important soils, portions of four ponds, and a small amount of Boulder Creek frontage. The $5.2 million purchase price will include the residences and agricultural infrastructure associated with the farm, as well as significant water rights and all of the mineral rights. This property's history began as a portion of the property patented under the Homestead Act by George Chambers in 1862, and after serving as the Boulder County Poor Farm from 1902 to 1918, has been in the Mary Hummel Wells family since 1920. The farm's adjacency to other city and state property interests make it attractive from a habitat connectivity and landscape scale perspective, and the property is also proximate to the planned confluence area multi-use paths, which you guys have seen recently, connecting Boulder and Gun Barrel, and the RTD right-of-way, which holds potential for a future regional trail connection from Valmont to Erie. Moving on to our charter purposes, as mentioned in the memo, the property fulfills most of the OSMP Charter purposes and is considered a high priority for acquisition by program staff for its features and valuable resources. In terms of water resources, the proposed acquisition includes significant water rights used to irrigate the farm's agricultural fields. The property also hosts open ditch corridors along the north Boulder Farmer's Ditch and the Boulder and Left Hand Ditch, and includes a short segment of Boulder Creek. Open Space and its partners have recently completed the initial work to restore the creek stretch adjacent to this parcel as part of the Boulder Creek Master Plan. The property also includes portions of four historic gravel ponds, and this complex boasts healthy wetlands, which you guys were able to see, while also offering extensive wetland restoration and habitat management opportunities. Additionally, a large portion of the farm falls in the Boulder Creek Flood Plain and Flood Way, and a major city sewer line bisecting the property suffered major damage during the 2013 flood. Protection and management of the flood plain through acquisition could help the city better protect this asset, as well as other human infrastructure and important natural resources on and downstream of this property. The property's size, water resources, and adjacency to other conserve lands provide an ideal context for landscape scale habitat management and preservation of its valuable ecological resources. The reclaimed gravel ponds and cottonwood stands support fish communities, migrating waterfowl, and diverse songbird populations. Painted turtles and nesting great horn owls have also been observed on the property. From a scenic perspective, the property is highly visible from surrounding private and open space properties, North 63rd Street and Andrus Road, and offers sweeping views of the Front Range. Despite being an active agricultural operation, the farm boasts important natural area attributes as well, and it's adjacent to the Confluence Creek Natural Area, which is managed for flood plain and riparian wetland habitats, and has an important stream connection between environmental conservation areas in the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. The reclaimed gravel ponds in this area also provide a unique plains marsh environment that supports a wide variety of insects, birds, mammals, fish, and amphibians. Moving on to its agricultural significance, as the map shows, the Fort Chambers Poor Farm Property includes agricultural fields designated as farmland of statewide and local importance. Additionally, the soils and irrigation flows could allow implementation of some of the department's agricultural plan goals, such as diversified vegetable production. The farm is actively used for cattle grazing and alfalfa hay production, and also includes agricultural improvements, and well-maintained irrigation laterals and infrastructure, which allow the agricultural operation to continue without interruption upon acquisition. The majority of the property's improvements are clustered around the main house, providing a possible headquarters compound for agricultural tenancy. Aesthetically appealing for its unique architecture and rural character, the Fort Chambers Poor Farm Property is also listed on the National Register of Historic Places and is significant for its contribution to the agricultural and social history of Boulder County and the quality of life in the area. As previously detailed, the property was homesteaded in 1862 by George Chambers, who built the first portion of the main house around that same time, which I have previously incorrectly told you was 1875, it was actually around 1862. And the farm is also the presumed location of Fort Chambers constructed in 1864. With some additions and adaptations to the main house, some that were later demolished, and construction of a rare water system, the property served as the Boulder County Poor Farm from 1902 to 1919, or 1918, excuse me. Since 1920, under the Hummel and Wells ownership, the property has been used to experiment with growing sugarbeets, raise cattle, pigs, goats, and other farm animals, grow grain and corn, and operate threshing and seed cleaning processes. The property's size, location, and water features also make it appealing for public access and potential passive recreational opportunities, including hiking, biking, and bird watching. Additionally, the ponds have historically been privately fished for bass and bluegill, and the planned confluence area multi-use paths, excuse me, and potential RTD Valmontiary Regional Trail could provide future public access opportunities. Upon acquisition, careful management considerations will be made to balance public use with the ongoing agricultural operations and protection of the sensitive environmental resources. Property is located in Area 3 of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan and is zoned rural residential, which reflects the intended low-density, natural area, open space, and agricultural-type land uses to encourage spatial definition, buffer to the more intensive residential developments, which you can see north and south of this property, and priorities to preserve the area's agricultural heritage. Additionally, because of its size and location in Area 3 of the BVCP, the farm is specifically identified in the 2013 OSMP Acquisition Plan, Plans BVCP Priority Acquisition Area. Upon acquisition, the property will remain closed to the public until resource assessment and management recommendations are developed during OSMP's property integration process. During this time, OSMP staff will more closely evaluate the resource management and infrastructure needs of the farm, as well as potential partnerships with historic preservation organizations. It is anticipated in the interim, and if possible, the property will be leased to agricultural tenants to provide continuity of maintenance and the agricultural operation. So, I've put on the screen the staff recommendation. I won't read it, because it will also be in your motion, hopefully, but I am happy to answer questions. And Geneva Ferrara, who is the daughter of Mary Wells and represents the Sellers, is also here, if you have any questions or want to chat with her at all.
Do you want to say just a little bit more about the historic structure? I mean, it's an extraordinary structure and has a lot of potential, but could take a lot of care and.
Several structures are actually historic on the property. I'm assuming you're talking about the main house. And it will undergo, and I think we did in property, in the integration information, the initial thing we will be doing after acquisition is a historic structure assessment. So, we do have details from when it was listed on the National Register of Historic Places, the surveys and information they have, as well as a great deal of information at Carnegie Library from the family, things like that. So, we will absolutely do a historic structure assessment, which will, you know, not only look at the structure and how to possibly, you know, what it would take to restore, to further restore it, but also, yes, what condition it is in and things like that, and how we can get it occupied, and what that means, whether it's by, for residents, whether it's for an organization, whether it has some open space educational or interpretive benefit, things like that. So, that will happen post-acquisition. But, yes, the main house having served, you know, initially as a home, but then, you know, its history as a poor farm is a pretty, you know, cool history to read about and to see how that came to be as well. You know, the county used to basically put people in boarding houses, indigent and popper, as they described them, into boarding houses, and they made a resolution to find places to be, a place to be able to put these. And this was actually the second one in the county. They sold the first and purchased this one, and so, yeah, it definitely has a really great history.
Because the language is a little more complicated than usual, I just wanted to make sure I, and we understand. So, the property, everything, the land, the buildings, the water, and the mineral rights are owned 50/50 between the estate of Mary Wells and the Wells Family Trust?
Correct. The water is actually, I think, yes, the water is completely owned by the living trust, I believe, but the motion will cover how the contract is written, basically.
Did we have public input?
Or comment?
Comment on this House before we go ahead.
Okay. Are there any mineral and water rights listed with the property that are not part of this purchase? I guess I.
No, they're.
Word of pertinent is kind of not helpful.
Oh, yes. So, there has no, there have been no mineral severances in the chain of title on this property, so we are getting all the minerals. The water rights are, so what's not listed here is typical groundwater rights, and the domestic well, but we don't, you know, that doesn't typically have a value associated with it that is a pertinent and does come with the property, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any lingering sewer line issues with the complications that they had because of the flood?
There are not. They did reinforce that and repair it, but there is a future city project that I know of to basically install a new sewer line, a new main sewer line that may or may not, there's several alignments that, you know, are, again, it's just in conceptual design at this point, that I do believe one conceptual alignment may follow basically side by side to the current one. But, and again, I'm kind of going back to one map I saw months ago, but there.
I think another alternative follows the rail line.
Follows, yeah.
And another alternative follows the roadway.
61st Street, yeah, so there, again.
And there's a whole process underway for a value, an alternatives analysis is underway for that.
Okay.
So, this one would still be, to my knowledge, would still be functional, but for less of, it would be not considered the main sewer line to Boulder anymore. It would be, I believe, mostly serving Gun Barrel to the north.
And I'm assuming that we would get pretty strong with trying to find a partnership on taking care of that building. I know we've had some people come forward, but there's been concerns by, you know, citizens that these buildings stay vacant, so.
Right. That was pretty much the first time we even saw the property. We went back and said, how do we get creative and what, who do we reach out to and things? And so, yes, our cultural resources staff, as well as real estate staff to some extent, but cultural resources has definitely started putting those conversations, started having those conversations and putting those feelers out. So, we're hopeful it will either go that way or that, you know, potential grant opportunities, you know, we would also assess whether it's we directly pursue those or work with the historic preservation organization to do so.
Also, a thought I had was, with the proximity to Sawhill Ponds, we're gonna probably have a lot of dogs and things, so I just want to avoid any of our conflict problems like we have at BVR, given that we're. like we have at BBR, given that we're going to be putting agricultural tenants in that situation again. So when we start looking at use and things, I'd just like to put the caveat, since I won't be around, that we keep that in mind, so we don't end up, you know, with other properties that have cattle conflicts, so.
Cattle and dog. Molly, I also want to mention that you found their missing cow.
I bet.
And she had just had her calf. So, yes, they were very thankful because they had lost that cow because a gate had been left open and they couldn't find it.
I'm good for finding critters.
Just to be, to make sure I understand, after this acquisition, and then there's some money that has been appropriated but not spent, I presume for Boulder Valley Farms, and I don't know if Suits has been closed yet, but that's the 11.25 that's approved. And then, so after all those are done, we'll have 11.5 million left for 2018 acquisitions?
In our land, what we call our real estate acquisition CIP. However, embedded in that is some money that is being earmarked for campus relocation activities. So if you subtract that out, we'll have roughly about $7.5 million left in our, what would be considered our acquisition dollars that we would, that we would have available to us for this year. So that includes past year's carryover plus this year's CIP allocation, and we're anticipating a new allocation in 2019 as well.
We may need our attorney to read this motion.
And by the way, I, we haven't, I know we haven't said this much, but this is an amazing property. You know, it not only checks some boxes, but it really stamps on. So I'll move that the Open Space Board of Trustees recommend that the Boulder City Council approve the purchase of approximately 110 acres of land, associated residences and agricultural outbuildings, and a pertinent mineral and water rights, including 340.8 shares of North Boulder Farmer's Ditch from Geneva A. Ferrara, personal representative of the estate of Mary H. Wells, deceased, as to an undivided half interest, and the Wells Family Trust as to an undivided half interest for 5.2 million for open space and mountain parks purposes.
Second. All in favor? All right. Wonderful property.
Thank you all.
Incredible.
Thanks to all.
Nice job. Well.
I like that plus A look.
You all.
All right. Well, I guess. As the gavel rolls. Aren't we ready? Yay.
Done, all right.